Good morning, Madam Chair, Budget Committee members and city staff. My name is Dubi Kanen Gisser. I'm here on behalf of the Toronto Police Services Board. The Toronto Police Services Board is the legislative body entrusted with the duty to ensure the provision of adequate and effective policing in Toronto. Under the Police Services Act and through similar language in the Community Safety and Policing Act that will soon replace it, the police service must deliver an adequate level of service in at least the following five areas: emergency response, law enforcement, crime prevention, assistance to victims of crime, and public order maintenance. The delivery of adequate and effective police services in these five areas is mandated by law. They are not optional, and the level of service delivery must be considered adequate to meet the demands of the growing and complex city that is Toronto. Over the past decade, the board has been working more than ever to enhance its governance and oversight of the Toronto Police Service and engage in broad reforms across the service to ensure that Toronto has a world-leading police service, one that the residents of Toronto trust and that helps keep Toronto the safest and best city in the world. Throughout this challenging process and despite the increased demands that the board has placed on the service, the board has emphasized fiscal responsibility, requiring the service to find savings and efficiencies wherever possible while maintaining a high level of service for Torontonians. As our CIO will discuss soon, since 2013, the service has seen four budgets coming in at net zero all lower, with an overall increase throughout the period that is significantly below the rate of inflation, despite the continued growth in both the size of our city and the complexity of our policing challenges. As our board has seen, not only during this budget process but throughout the year, these savings came at a cost. Quite simply, service levels are currently not an acceptable place to support what our city needs. In talks with service members, both uniform and civilian, we hear time and time again about understaffed teams and the deep impacts of burnout on our people. Members of the community have told us heart-wrenching stories of waiting far too long for a police response while fearing for their lives and the lives of their loved ones. Madam Chair, the board has heard and considered the comprehensive analysis that was brought forward by the chief and unanimously supported his request for a fiscally responsible but very much necessary investment in boosting staffing at the service to respond to these real needs totaling $20 million or 1.7% above our 2023 budget. This request does not undermine but rather supports our efforts for greater accountability and transparency, for a fair and equitable police service, and for the continued work on novel approaches to improve community safety and support alternative service delivery, such as investments in and collaboration with the Toronto Community Crisis Service. Our CIO will now provide you with the detailed numbers and statistics to support our request and explain why this request, as approved by the board, is absolutely necessary. Throughout this presentation, I ask you to remember the people behind these numbers and your legislative duty to ensure that these people have an adequate and effective police service to answer their call at their time of need. Thank you.
Thank you, and good morning, city councillors and everyone here to listen to our presentation. My name is Sabina Dollywell. I'm the Chief Administrative Officer for the service. We will get right into the presentation in the interest of time. So this slide effectively outlines what we do and why we do it. We are a service delivery organization and the services that we are required to deliver as defined under the Police Services Act. We deliver these services not only to meet our duty under this act, but also because we are committed collectively as an organization to a thriving and successful city where people, residents, and visitors deserve and need to feel safe. So we've talked and mentioned about adequate and effective a number of times between the chief and the executive director of the board. So what does that really mean? There's no real formula, but there are generally accepted standards in terms of what determines adequate and effective. These are in particular outlined in the Community Safety and Policing Act that will replace the new Police Services Act later this year. There are basically five standards set out in the regulation to help us understand the resources required to deliver adequate and effective services in order to meet the complex needs of the city. And so the subsequent slides will go through some of those considerations based on what's been defined in the Act. So in terms of the city and the uniqueness of what makes Toronto Toronto, we are the fastest-growing city in North America. We have grown, as the chief mentioned, by more than 460,000 residents in 2010. Putting that into perspective, that is the equivalent of the size of London, Ontario, which the city in and of itself has 600 police officers to maintain its public safety footprint. This exponential growth is expected to continue and accelerate, in fact, in the next two years, where we are anticipated to grow as much as we've done in the last seven years in the next two years, which translates to about an additional 200,000 people. And from a workload standpoint, what we have seen historically is that for every 100,000 increase in the city, our calls for service go up by about 65,000 calls into our 911. Over and above that, 27.5 million visitors, only city with a Major League Baseball and basketball team, 20% of the Canadian GDP, 40% of the Canadian headquarters, and 87 of the 108 consulates. Given our economic, social, media, sports, and political footprint, there is no Canadian city comparable to the unique demands of Toronto. From a public safety standpoint, being also in a location along the 401 corridor, we have a much higher degree and share of all of the many crime types that we track and that are also tracked through Stats Canada and various other metrics. So to give you just a few examples, 22% of all incidents of human trafficking across Canada occur in the Toronto area. Two-thirds of the province's carjackings occur in Toronto. And the chief spoke about the geopolitical events and its impact to the city. No other city has had well over 300 events and protests due to the conflict abroad. This type of demographics and unique characteristics can also be considered in terms of our internal shifts. We are seeing our internal demographic shift as well. At any point, 25% of our workforce can retire. Within 10 years, that number will be 60%. On the other side of the experience curve, 25%, and this will grow with each cadet class, of our frontline has less than five years of experience. And being on the frontline, that is the most unpredictable, most urgent, most scrutinized, and in many ways, most dangerous work. So supervision is critical. Building a resilient pipeline for us is critical. As some may know, we do have provincial capacity limits in terms of how much we can hire in each size. And so any interruption to our hiring plan is very difficult to catch up on due to the capacity constraints at the college. So we've talked about since 2010, the service has been on a cost-containment and austerity-driven journey. And the city during that period has grown by 13%, while our officers have decreased by 11%. And, you know, often civilianization is mentioned around our use of special constables. We have not civilianized to the degree to make up for that shortfall. That is, it still remains a smaller component to our overall frontline presence. And the chief did mention, even if we go back to 1999, our current staffing levels are only 37 officers more than they were in 1999. The world has changed considerably since then. And if we go back to 1999, our population grew 600,000. That is the size of Waterloo, which has 800 officers to maintain their public safety footprint. We also went back, our data, to about 2004, that seemed to be the earliest, where we can even see, are our officers attending more and more calls? And it turns out, if you compare 2004 to now, we are attending more calls. We are attending about 400,000 calls, when 20 years ago, we were attending about 300,000. So 37 more officers since 1999, and yet we're attending over 100,000 more calls. What I can tell you is that can only happen through a significant amount of reform, changing the way we do business, getting out of other things. It is certainly coming at a cost of other types of work in order to reap that level of capacity and to maximize and optimize the use of our resources. And you will hear other stats later in this presentation. It has indeed come at a cost. So with a declining workforce, doing more calls, a growing demand, this effectively was only achievable through, as I mentioned, reform, divesting out of work, changing the way we do things. You know, another area to look at is our major crime indicators. We are seeing an increase by about 26% from 2015 to 2022, but even a year-over-year increase of 18 to 20%. So with an increase in population, the service, as I mentioned, also typically gets an increase in the number of calls. 65,000 additional calls for every 100,000 additional residents. And that trend holds true, for the most part excluding maybe COVID years. So from 2015 to 2022, the emergency calls for service also grew by 26%. And we're responding to these calls to the best of our abilities. We are going to more and more calls, we are making more arrests, but response times and other metrics have suffered. So Toronto, as everyone would know if you're driving in, was identified as the most congested city in Canada and the seventh-most congested globally. This year, we did see collisions increase. Thankfully, we also saw a reduction in traffic-related fatalities. However, collisions themselves still need to be attended to and investigated. This budget does reflect a commitment to Vision Zero. However, the budget reduction that is being proposed could very well create gaps in some of the proactive traffic work we do. One of the single largest differentiators are the many planned and unplanned events that require a policing, security, and response. We have seen public safety requirements for special events and festivals increase. Eight permitting departments in the city lends itself to many events occurring at the same time. Events are larger, they are in bigger footprints, and the number of sites sometimes have grown, and they span longer in days. Due to the high degree of variability, the amount of unplanned activity and resource constraints, we in fact don't have dedicated resources for this work. When we maintain public safety for events and protests, festivals, all of that is driven through callbacks, through temporary redeployment of resources from all over the service. We do a whole-of-service response for periods of time, but that effectively takes away from all the other important work and core service delivery functions we must continue to do. It's important to note on the chart that we'd had a projection around where we would end up by the end of the year. We thought we would be around 2,300 events overall. But as everyone is keenly aware, Toronto and its residents have been deeply impacted as of October 7th. And we have, so these numbers are higher now because we, just since October 7th, have attended well over 300 additional events, deployed resources, asked partner services to support. The service, just on this alone, is stretched beyond acceptable levels for a city as unique as Toronto. So another factor that is considered is how do we fare relative to other cities and jurisdictions? When looking at other major cities, you can see how wide the gap is between the number of residents one officer serves in Toronto, which is 608, and how many residents one officer serves in other cities. The other chart that is provided on the right-hand side is sort of the opposite of that metric. It reflects the number of officers per 100,000 residents. There is often a discussion around these numbers and whether they include special constables or transit units or bylaw. The reality is what these graphs are intended to show is a guide. It informs trends. To get the relative proportions, every city effectively has its own arrangement in terms of policing waterways and transit and bylaw and use of special constables and how even the city is split up. However, any way you look at it, the city remains one of the leanest services of all major cities in North America. We have also seen and examine ourselves comparisons that are made between urban centers and its suburban sort of surroundings. There really, for Ontario, is no close comparator, but you can see, if you compare ourselves to Vancouver and Montreal, that generally the surrounding suburban police services typically are smaller in size because everything sort of moves towards the center. But what you can see for Toronto is that gap between our suburban services and the city is actually very narrow relative to our other Canadian big-city counterparts. This slide also continues the comparison in terms of budget allocation. So in terms of cost relative to the overall city budget, we have and continue to take a declining share. This was, this chart was posted in The Globe and Mail in 20, I believe in 2019, but the trend in fact holds even in more recent studies. Osterity measures over the last decade have put us towards the bottom in terms of investment in policing relative to other cities. We are also well below the provincial average of what increases our partner services receive. Just in 2024 alone, the average proposed increase for Ontario in, for policing is 8% compared to our ASK. And finally, one of the other questions when we think of how we do relative to response times, it's important to note that not every service publishes their response time publicly. We certainly have, but we have canvassed about a dozen other services, large and small, across Canada coast-to-coast. And what we can tell you is our response time of 22 minutes is double the second lowest response time we could find at 12 minutes. And so since we, you know, we have mentioned that there have been many years of cost containment and effort reflected in our budget, it's important to note that our ASK does already include $270 to $400 million of cumulative cost containment measures. And examples of that, you know, four 0% budgets over the last 10 years meant we had to absorb those collective bargaining increases and inflationary pressures. We've redeployed resources, we've civilianized where we could. Where we can, we divert calls, we send alternative service delivery, we are doing that actively. We have disbanded units like our community response units, our priority response group, which was like a bit of a surge capacity. We have also transferred lifeguards and crossing guards to the city along with the budget. We had hiring freezes among many other management actions. But all of this has effectively come at a cost and degradation of service, making it very difficult to provide adequate and effective delivery, especially as it relates to response times that are not at acceptable levels. 60% of the time, there is not a unit available to respond to a Priority One call. And that call, that, it takes about 10 minutes for a car to potentially be available. We have, while we are applauded nationally for our homicide case closure rates, that comes at the cost of other case closure rates that are far below. And we do have officer burnout and wellness. That is not just the city of Toronto. That is a sector-wide problem when you're doing very dangerous and traumatic work. This chart really just provides a bit of a 10-year history. What you can see is that in 2023, policing services cost $372 roughly per person per year. The Canadian median for policing in terms of how much was on the tax base was 409. In 2010, that number was about 332. And if you factor in inflation, that would have actually been 460 in 2023 dollars. So today, our cost per resident is roughly $87 less than it would have been if our, if all, if our cost profile in 2010 had continued. What it also shows is that since 2010, the Toronto Police Service average budget increase was 2%. Collective bargaining, which is not in our control, that averages 2.6, and inflation is another 2.7. So what you can see is that our increases have been completely eaten up with inflationary and bargaining pressures causing the service over the last decade to contract. Even when we go back to 1999, because there were periods of growth, our average increase was about 3.4%. The average collective agreement still remained at 2.7, and the average inflation remained at 2.3. The overall proportions, the relationship still holds. The amount of bargaining pressure and inflationary pressure still required the service to meet demands by doing things differently. And as I mentioned, over that period of time, populations grown, the digital footprint's grown, social media has grown, the internet and e-commerce, the world looks very different than it did in 1999. Yet, we are up 37 resources. We've already mentioned that we do take a declining share of the city's budget. We won't spend more time here, but it is there for your reference. And so despite, you know, a lot of the cost constraints, we are in fact leading in a number of areas in the sector. And as the fourth-largest police service in North America, that should be expected of us. So just to name a few, you know, our body-worn camera rollout and how it integrates with our evidence.com platform is leading the sector on digital enablement. Our race-based data framework and our approach, acknowledging our interactions with the public, is a framework that is now being adopted nationally. Our BIL dashboard is a tool that is now being rolled out provincially. In fact, there was a recent announcement on that. And we are making great strides in community-centric program delivery through our neighborhood community officers, our MCR, mental crisis intervention teams, our focus tables. But there do remain significant core service delivery areas where we're falling apart and falling short. In terms of what's most important to the communities we serve and the greatest public safety impact, response times are not where we're at, and we would not be seen as a best practice in that area. Call wait times, we know that's been a recent story and focus, is also not meeting NINA standards. Our investigative capacity constraints means case closure rates are not what victims would want in terms of seeking justice. And we do have a significant backlog of disclosure to support the court process, backlog that has mandated timelines to meet. As part of the best practices, I thought it was also important just to remind all of us around the city's auditor general findings. She did review our 911 response times, she reviewed our call center, and that review was maybe, she had said, the second time in her career where she recommended that more resources were in fact needed. She also suggested that any savings or efficiencies found as a result of the recommendations that we are taking very seriously and, you know, and in progress of implementing, need to be reinvested back into the service to improve Priority One response and 911. So at the board, we presented what our priority actions were. What I would say is with a budget reduction, we cannot actually meet all of these priority areas that we would want to work on and invest in. Greater core service delivery capacity is effectively the main priority. That's priority response, that's investigations, and that is much-needed supervision. Evidence management and becoming compliant with mandatory disclosure would be another priority. We would want to continue reform, community engagement, vital community programming like neighborhood officers. And lastly, we would like to be able to create the capacity through technology, alternative service delivery, and referrals so that each budget is not only made up of just people resources. But I do need to be clear, we cannot actually get to all of these with a budget reduction. Specifically, our hiring, that is predicated, that is what the increased capacity is predicated on, we will not be able to hire 300 additional officers. And as recent as yesterday, that was the commitment of what this budget will assume. That is, that is not achievable with a $12.6 million cut. What, and what I think is important to understand is that in the budget increase, the board approved $20 million, that effectively was the chief's operating capacity. That is the flex he has for hiring. And if 12.6 out of that 20 is cut, that does leave us with 7.4. That barely gets us through A class. And so we cannot do 100 civilians in that way. We cannot do 300 officers when the, more than half of the operational capacity we had to work with is now gone. So this really just summarizes, this is something we presented to the board, and we do have this also in the city notes. It just, it talks about where our starting point was. You know, our starting point was $75 million, but it also shows where we got to. And it is really a product of productive conversations, staff to staff, working with the city on bridging strategies, on long-term plans, internal cost-cutting, taking a long-range view of where we would be to ultimately get to what the board approved of 20 million. But we do also highlight that on top of that, there is a COVID adjustment of 17 and then a budget, a proposed budget reduction of 12.6. This chart again is in the city notes and also represents the approved budget. This one, though, more clearly shows the COVID adjustment that we were asked to incorporate. This slide, however, just, it does not include the proposed budget reduction. So again, it's important to note, this is our proposed hiring plan, but the budget reduction will not allow us to actually achieve this. So as a result of the 2023 hiring, so the hiring we did in 2023, the yellow bars we will be able to deploy because those cadets were hired last year and deployed. The green bars, we will not be able to do, at least not in full with the level of reduction that is proposed. In terms of the civilian hiring, already said, we probably can't do any of it, but what's important to, I think, highlight is when we talk about civilian hiring, for the service, that means direct frontline service delivery members, whether that's 911, special constables, court officers, bookers in the station. What it also means in terms of our civilian footprint is direct frontline support. So mechanics, fleet, fleet property, our IT footprint, property and evidence management. The true corporate footprint is 10%. The true corporate footprint is 10% of the civilians, and that 10% has generally been consistent, sometimes it's a little bit lower, but the, you know, finance, HR, IT, for us, that's about 10%. The rest of it are direct frontline or frontline supporting service delivery members. And so I'll conclude the last couple of slides just on the risks and challenges that we also did talk to our board about. Because our board also expressed some concern around how low our ASK was, we did talk about the bridging mechanisms and we are, and to be clear, we are thankful for those. Those are though, one-time in nature, they will, if they're reversed, result in higher budgets in the future. Or if they don't come to pass in this budget, we would have to internally look at what we would do to do the long-term bridging. Premium pay is an ongoing pressure. Every year, we start off the year roughly with at least $15 million of premium pay because it's the unplanned work. We don't know year over year sometimes where that will end up. Over, that pressure continues to increase, but it's important to know that even with our budget ask, it's still included at least $15, $20 million of pressure that we as a service still need to sort of manage and mitigate as we go throughout the year. We are all also in the middle of planning for FIFA. We don't yet have an agreement around what those, an agreement on the costs, and so it's just important to know, our planning work has started, but it may not be able to continue if ultimately we don't land on agreement. I am told those are productive conversations, but it is waiting just on other levels of government. But it's important to highlight that that is a big piece of work and a big cost in particular for next year. The new Act has about $10 to $12 million of additional cost in terms of equipment, mandatory training. We have not included it in this year's budget because we were waiting on what the transition timelines were going to be. So we will manage that and work with the province in terms of when things truly have to be in effect. But it is important to note that what we did present to the board, we were clear and the chief was clear, that we didn't believe costs could be reduced further without taking unacceptable risks to the organisation and operationally. Non-approval in whole or in part of the budget would require service adjustments. And the result of that would be either degradation in proactive work, looking at our court cases, risk of those getting thrown out or stayed, gaps even in emergency response, compromising some of the vital community programming we are all investing in. And so we effectively are saying we wouldn't have any prospect of delivering adequate and effective with a reduction of the size that is being proposed. I will leave it here, and the next few slides were on capital, but I think we can just take those questions as they come. Thank you.